Are you ready back there? Yep. I would like to call to order the school board meeting for independent school district six twenty-four. I would ask the secretary to call the roll.
Arcan.
Here.
Daniels, here. Newmaster.
Here.
Strife Oji.
Here.
All right, could we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, we have an agenda for us and I would like to see if we could get someone to move and second the agenda.
So moved, second.
Okay, we have an agenda, we have it seconded. This would be a voice vote, so all in favor of accepting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And with that agenda, we also have a consent agenda ready to go and we a consent agenda are those sundry items that come to us month to month, like minutes, field trips, human resource requests. But one item we always like on that is the generosity of our community to provide gifts to the school district. And so we want to make sure we give a special thank you for those that reach out and continue to provide for the school district. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Daniels, move, second.
I second.
By Oji, second. This would be a roll call vote, so I'll actually call the roll.
Arcan.
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right, it's now time in our agenda for our public forum portion of the school board meeting. We have one person that will speak tonight. I want to remind people that the public forum allows for three minutes per speaker. Within one minute remaining, I will show the red card. And then at thirty seconds, you know that I will show you this one. And then when your three minutes are up, I will gavel and show you the other red card. Speakers will be called up to the microphone. Only those individuals have been recognized will be allowed to speak. School district policy and data privacy laws preclude personnel and student matters or data from being discussed publicly. With that said, Ms. Bradfield. Once again, thank you for taking your time to speak to us today. I appreciate it. We're going to go ahead and move along and the first item I see is the superintendent's report, Dr. Kazmicek.
Okay, thank you Chair Arcan, members of the board. So with Market Fest starting up a few weeks ago, we have enjoyed seeing students, families and community members at this fun summertime tradition. Please find us Thursdays at the district's booth on Third Street during the rest of the weeks of Market Fest and pick up a pencil and a bear paw tattoo. White Bear Lake Area Schools Nutrition Services is sponsoring free summer meals for kids and teens at several locations in the district. Find more information such as serving times and sites as a news item on the district's website, www.isd624.org. The meals are open to all children age eighteen and younger. The program has no enrollment requirement and no cost and the healthy meals are based on USDA nutrition guidelines. The program is open to all children and you are not taking meals away from someone who needs it more. We have enough food for all who participate. With school out for summer, our district is still busy this summer with a variety of programs. Students are engaged in extended day and flex, summer school and activities camps and many activities in between. Thank you to our students, parents and staff members who keep our buildings and programs hopping year round. A group of engaged staff, family and community members were busy earlier this summer as well, coming together to focus on setting the stage for the district's updated strategic plan. Committee members heard an update on the successes that resulted from the 2019 strategic plan and helped set the stage with four strategies that will be a focus moving forward. The board will officially review the new strategies at the August board meeting, but I wanted to take this time to thank our committee members for their work. And as we prepare for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we want to remind families that we are currently accepting enrollment for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Find additional information at isd624.org/enroll.
Any questions for Dr. Kazmicek? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to move on to discussion item D1, capital project levy renewal. Dr. Kazmicek?
All right, I'll invite Andy Johnson to talk through the capital project levy renewal and then Andy and I will probably take team questions that arise. Mr. Wald is unable to be with us, so Andy and I will do our best.
Indeed, big shoes to fill with Tim not here. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to talk about the capital projects levy renewal. First, a little bit of history, the current capital projects levy has been in place since two thousand thirteen, which was a renewal of the two thousand three levy. So started in two thousand three, then there was a renewal and increase in two thousand thirteen. This levy supported the acquisition of technology, hardware, curriculum, assessment and management software and large musical instruments and as well as textbooks and materials. We also have some previous voting results. You can see that in two thousand three, the measure passed by about fifty-four percent. And then in two thousand thirteen, passed by about sixty-one percent. So why is this levy important? This levy is really critical for us to be able to meet all of our capital needs throughout the district. This will generate almost two point six million dollars for taxes starting in two thousand and twenty-four. And we're really focused on four areas of spending. One related to safety and security, just to maintain and continue to increase those safety and security measures that we have throughout the school district. Technology and related services, so classroom technology, software and computers for students. And then as well as maintaining all of the equipment that we have and then helping to fund some of our technology staff so that we're able to service the equipment that we have throughout our schools. And then textbooks, curriculum materials and equipment and then musical instruments. So we have a replacement cycle for just about everything and this really helps us to maintain what we currently have and then be responsive to the changing needs in curriculum, whether it's from curriculum changes from the state or just best practice. And then transportation, we have a replacement cycle for all of our transportation vehicles and some of those, some of the fleet's getting pretty, pretty old. So it is important that we continue to maintain that so we have safe vehicles out on the streets. Oops, too much. So the tax impact, we're asking or we're proposing a, a flat renewal of the existing two point two zero eight percent capital projects levy. So that would be on the ballot on November eighth. So then this evening, we have it open for discussion right now and then later in the agenda, the school board, we would recommend that the school board approves the resolution relating to renewing the expiring capital projects levy authorization of the school district and calling a special election thereon. And then if it goes forward, then on November eighth would be election day. Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I don't have necessarily a question, maybe more of a comment. I just, you know, it's, I'm glad that it's a flat renewal and that makes sense to me, although, you know, we know that inflation in all of these areas have really gone up in ten years or even in the last couple of years. So I appreciate that the district is mindful that they're going to keep that rate flat. And I also, you know, think about how important these areas are to our students and our families and, you know, keeping up with technology and how fast that changes. And as you mentioned, you know, the bus and the safety and security of buildings, which we know is of utmost importance to all parents and all students and all staff. So thank you for the presentation.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you for that. I believe you're up next, operational, we're going to go to operational item E1, which will be action on resolution of approving, wait, no, I'm going to see, that's right, action approving the nine sixteen LTFM plan.
Yes. So this is related to LTFM, which is long-term facility maintenance for Northeast Metro nine sixteen. So every July, we come to you with our own LTFM plan and then ask for approval of the nine sixteen LTFM plan. The nine sixteen LTFM plan is a joint effort between all of the member school districts. So the total identified in the plan for, for nine sixteen is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Our portion of that expense is twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. So that comes through on our levy. It's a tax that we then receive and then remit to nine sixteen. So the recommended action for us this evening is to approve the resolution approving Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District number nine sixteen's long-term facility maintenance budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue in the amount of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars as presented.
Okay, do we have any other questions before I call for a motion? Okay, so we got Dr. Newmaster, a second?
Second.
All right, so this will recall a roll, this will require a roll call vote to approve this, so go ahead and call the roll.
Arcan.
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Next, on the agenda, E2 is the, I'm looking here, sorry. It is the action on the ten-year term facility maintenance plan. That also, you also?
Yes, I'm up for the next three. So this is our school district's LTFM plan and this is not new for you. We, we seem to come to you at least twice a year. So we're required in July to come to you and ask for your approval, so that's included in our levy this fall. If you look through the documents, you'll see we're actually proposing another bond issue related to LTFM. That'll come later this, later this school year, this winter sometime. And so that's incorporated now as an estimate and you'll see that on the revenue side as well as the expense side and that'll get firmed up this fall, once we're, once we're finished kind of identifying our cash flow needs. So coming forward now with the recommendation to approve our ten-year facility maintenance plan as it's presented. There's very detailed document in there that kind of identifies all of the projects that we've identified coming up for this coming school year. And then also kind of the rough guideline of the plan for the next ten years.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the ten-year long-term facility maintenance plan as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, we have a motion on the table, approve the ten-year long-term facility plan. This is going to require a roll call vote, so can you call the roll, please?
Arcan.
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, we're on to E3. This is action on the official depositaries for the school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures. And Ms. Johnson?
So each January at the organizational meeting, we come to you and ask for your approval of all of our designated signatures for all of our banking accounts and then authorize as well who is able to make transfers between our, our check-in and savings accounts. And so as we have turnover in staffing, some of those have, need signatory authority. And so we just bring this forward now because we've had some changeover in staffing. So all of the appropriate people for this coming school year would be reflected in the document that you have in your packet now.
Do we have any questions? All right, can I get a motion to move to approve the revised list of official depositaries for the school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
Moved.
Dr. Newmaster, move, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Daniels. This will recall, require a roll call, wait, a voice vote?
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thanks for having my back there. All right, now we're on to E4, this is an action on bids for transportation.
Yes, so we currently have, we have several contractors that we, we contract transportation for. Our main one is for student. And the current contract that we have has a two-year term and then we have the option to extend for an additional two one-year terms. And so as we've been negotiating, negotiating with them, we've settled on a proposed five percent increase for this coming school year and then a three percent increase for the following school year. We feel really good about that increase. Some of our neighboring districts have seen increases of ten to fourteen percent. So this feels, this feels like a very reasonable increase for our school district for the next couple of years. So with that, our recommended action would be to approve the extension of our current agreement with First Student with a five percent increase for next year and then a three percent increase for twenty-three, twenty-four.
The motion before us is to move, move to approve the extension of the agreement with First Student as a primary provider with an increase of five percent for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and a three percent for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, consistent with Minnesota statute two zero one five, section one, two, three, B, five, two, subsections one and three. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Daniels, okay, second?
Second.
Second by Strife Oji, is there any discussion?
I just have a comment. I'm sorry to be the one commenting so much, but I just want to say I'm just grateful that we have partners to do our transportation with because I know other districts and especially St. Paul, Minneapolis and some of the suburban districts don't have buses to pick up their kids. So we've done really well in that regard, so I'm happy to see this partnership continue. Thank you.
Yep, indeed, we agree.
Hey, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, this, this will be a roll call vote.
Arcan.
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Newmaster, aye. Strife Oji, aye.
The motion carried. All right, now we're going to go on to I action, our item E5, action on the proposed substitute teacher rate change. Mr. Mons?
Good evening. We have not been immune in White Bear Lake with the statewide and certainly metro-wide teacher shortage when it comes to reserve teachers. And so we've, we've looked over the last two years, done a number of, of studies to see kind of what our surrounding area districts are doing. We're recommending a thirty-five dollar daily rate increase here to both our casual reserve teachers and then also our retired teachers who work as, as substitutes for us. And so that would raise those rates from a hundred and forty dollars to a hundred and seventy-five and then one hundred and fifty to one hundred and eighty-five in the case of retired teachers who are still subbing for us. Just to create a little bit of context there, that would put us in the upper half, but not at the top of kind of our regional competitors who we compete for those substitutes with. And we'll continue to monitor that situation. I'd also just like to note that this is not the only thing that we're looking at in terms of strategies to try to continue to bump up our fill rate. And so we do have building subs at each of our buildings. We're also looking at, you know, some new strategies around recruitment, but also ensuring that we're getting people that are actually subbing, not just hanging out on our sub list, which tends to be, you know, an issue that we have. And we're also trying to make it a little less scary for folks who are trying to step into that role. And so we're going to ensure that shadowing takes place, for instance, the first time somebody walks into one of our schools because that can be an extraordinarily nerve-wracking experience for somebody that hasn't done that before. So, you know, we're pursuing a lot of different options here, but this is certainly one where we need to remain competitive within the region.
Thank you, any questions?
I have a question, where does it put us in the West Metro? Is, are we on the higher end or you said we're not at the top?
We're not at the top. The top would be closer to two hundred. You know, so it really kind of depends and some of those are fairly nuanced, but this would put us in right around kind of the three-quarter mark. That being said, you know, by the time we start the school year, I'm sure we will be right around kind of the midpoint.
Okay, everyone's looking at it.
Because that will continue to rise.
Everybody's, okay.
Yeah, that's just what this is looking like at the moment. And this will not be the panacea. That will solve all of our problems here either, but it will be, you know, a step to make sure that we're remaining competitive.
I like the idea of shadowing as well, just an intro for people instead of just dropping them in.
For sure.
Hey, any other discussion or any questions? Hearing none, the recommended action in front of us, the school board approves the following, what? I'm going to ask for that right now, I'm going to read it. The school board approves the following revision to the reserve teacher pay accordingly. One seventy-five for full day reserve teachers, eighty-seven fifty for one half-day, one eighty-five for full day and ninety-two fifty for one half-day retired White Bear Lake reserve teacher. Remove of, removal of the frequency incentives for reserve teachers and there'll be no charge in practice of paying substitute teachers for working during prep. No change, I'm sorry, for working during their prep. If they are needed to cover another class, they will maybe call to do so with no increase on daily rate. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Moved.
Dr. Newmaster, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Strife Oji, any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be over, yes ma'am?
I tried to get a question in before, I'm just curious from someone who went through the district when they had trouble before all the issues that have come recently. And I know we went through several versions of call-in auto. Are we, are we using the same service that we were using last year or the year before?
We are, and I would say that this is part of kind of this whole puzzle for us because we are still using the same service. All of our regional, the, the public districts around us are using a different service, which is teachers on call that they use. And it does put us at a competitive disadvantage because calls go out through that app before they go out through the general service. So to the extent that we're sharing substitutes with other districts, we are at a disadvantage that way. We all use common software, so that, that doesn't get differentiated between districts. So they've essentially, they have a third party that assists in those districts. It does come at a rate increase as you look at doing that. So there is a cost to working with teachers on call and that's something that we need to continue to kind of reflect on and try to understand whether we're doing ourselves a service or a disservice at the moment in terms of how we're operating. So we do continue to keep those conversations going too.
But I wondered if we'd joined the rest of them and what the cost of that would be?
Twenty percent. Yeah, so that's a little inflated though, it's, so it's twenty percent minus the cost of FICA and payroll taxes. So, you know, it, it ends up being about a fifteen percent increase in terms of what we'd be paying on a daily basis.
And my other question would be, do the people that use that other service have a better fill rate?
It's hard to say, it's hard to get really good data on that. So typically, you know, I, but I do talk with my colleagues quite a bit. What makes that so hard is that things that you do internally to fill don't show up when you're trying to get those metrics between districts. And so, you know, we do spend time trying to get kind of apples to apples. Yes, I would say there is an advantage to being with teachers on call in terms of the experience there. And, you know, there can be a customer service disadvantage too in making that move. I know coming from a district that had made that move and I've followed other districts that have, it's not always incredibly popular with, with some of the substitutes that you currently have in your system, making that transition. And then I've found that people are pretty happy campers once they become acquainted with it.
Thinking of all the angles and the only thing I've heard from teachers is how easy is it under this system you're currently using for a teacher to request someone who is obviously successful and knowledgeable in their very specific field maybe?
I would say that that is a luxury of luxuries when we are in a position to be able to be searching for that right now.
Just to be able to ask somebody ahead to hold it.
So we, it absolutely has that capacity to have, you know, top five preferences, for instance, to be able to match skill sets, match preferences with, with which kinds of settings those substitutes want to be in. So we absolutely have the capacity, it's just not our reality.
Any other further discussion? All right, hearing none, we have a motion on the table, this will be a roll call vote.
Arcan.
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Okay, motion, passes. We're going to go now to action or agenda item E6, action on the renewal membership in the Minnesota State High School League for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And Dr. K, are you?
Yeah, I'll take this one, thank you. So this is an annual approval item, just approving our membership in the Minnesota State High School League. So as board members, you've reviewed the why we play video, that information was sent out prior to the meeting. And so that is, and that's one of the things that we need to do. And so really that, that's about it for presentation. We did, the recommended action is that we approve our membership in the Minnesota State High School League for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Any questions? Okay, can we get a motion to approve membership at the Minnesota State High School League?
Moved.
Hey, Daniels, do we have a second? Strife Oji, second. All right, and then do we have any questions or discussion?
I just appreciated, do I, I just appreciated the focus of the video and why and not, I, I really appreciate that, the, the content and why we're a part of this and the focus, so and not being so competitive to go to the pros.
I, I just want to say in editorializing that the high school league provides our students an opportunity to compete, not just in athletics, but extracurricular, whether it's speech, debate or other band and choir. And it's just an opportunity for them to learn to compete, learn to be competitive and, and then follow a passion. And then it, it also is a transfer from our students to their, their next job or whatever. They develop those work skills, they develop that working as a team, that communication piece. It really shows that no matter what they do, that we're providing them that opportunity to have memories. And some of the memories they make with their teammates, it's like when you see them four years, like forty years later, it's like you never left and you can pick up again. So it does play an important role in our, in our school and in our community, that's all I want to say.
After, I was going to say also, you know, a deep level of belonging. And I think for our kids, belonging and having some mentorship from their teammates and their coaches is, is super important. I agree.
Thank you, any other questions? So we have in front of us a motion to approve the Minnesota State High School League. We can do a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. All right, we have item E7, action on the designation of identified official with the authority for the MDE external user access recertification system.
All right, thank you, Mr. Arcan. The Minnesota Department of Education requires that school districts annually designate an identified official with authority to comply with the MNIT Enterprise Identity and Access Management Standard. So basically, this is an annual, annual approval item, we're required to do it. And we have, it's where we authorize users for the statewide system to enter data or to access data. So additionally, the identified official with authority assigns job duties and authorizes external users' access to MDE secure systems for their local education agency. So. So the recommended action is that you move to approve me, so I'll just read the recommended action. Move to approve Wayne Kasmercheck Superintendent and Rachel Marcusson, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, to add and remove names only for Rachel, as White Bear Lake Area Schools identified officials with authority as required by the Minnesota Department of Education.
Okay, thank you. We have in front of us a recommended action. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
A strike, Oji's, do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Newmaster, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. All right, now we have in front of us, agenda item E eight, action on the resolution relating to renewing the expiring capital project levy authorized, authorization of the school district, and calling a special election thereon. Ms. Johnson?
Earlier this evening, I went through a presentation on the renewal of our existing capital projects levy, included in your packet as a resolution that would approve us going forward and bringing that to the taxpayers. Also included in the packet is a review and comment document that we will then submit to the Minnesota Department of Education to have them review and get their approval as well, and then, as well as the sample ballot language that would go to the taxpayers in November. So the recommended action is to approve the resolution relating to renewing the expiring capital project levy authorization of the school district and calling a special election thereon as presented.
Thank you. So we have a recommended action. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Daniels, so, motion, okay, second?
Second.
Dr. Newmaster, any discussion?
I have a question.
That's perfect.
And it's probably a foolish question, but we, we call it a special election. It's not a separate day, though. It's the same day as the normal election.
Yeah, I think it's because you could technically have the election four, I think it's four times throughout the year, and so we happen to have it on election day, just because that's when we'll have the best voter turnout. I think that's why.
Yeah, I think my understanding is any, any school district election other than the regular board seats is considered a special election.
I just wondered, because I know we try to have it on the main day, because that saves money, and when they say special election, I imagine a little separate booth and a special thing.
Well, and, and also rest assured that these documents are prepared by our legal counsel, so it's worded exactly the way it needs to be worded.
I just wondered, I never noticed they were called special.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, this will be a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Next on our agenda tonight, we have agenda item E nine, action on the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar revision.
So in the original approved calendar, we had a student contact day on January second, twenty-twenty-three, which happens to be a federal holiday. That only happens once every seven years, plus factoring in a leap year, so not something we usually deal with, and it was missed here. And so we are looking to take that date off, so that would be a non-school day, and then we would replace that day with June ninth, with Friday, June ninth. It would not push us into a new week. So that is the recommendation.
Okay, so the recommended action is to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three academic calendar revision. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Strike, Oji, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Daniels, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Next, we, on the agenda, we have E ten, policy, policy of conflict of interest school board members. It looks like that will be, is that correct? Is that Ms. Babish? Am I missing one?
So this is the second reading, so typically we list them in total, all the, all the items, and we.
I got it.
Yep.
So this is the second reading, and we have policy two-ten, policy four-thirteen, policy four-twenty-four, policy seven-oh-four, and policy, policy nine-oh-two. So are there any questions or comments on any of those? Okay, so hearing none, we're going, yeah, okay, hearing none, we're going to take this and one full sweep of all those. Can I get a motion to approve all those policies that I mentioned?
So moved.
Okay, Strike, Oji, do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Newmaster, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, this will be a, this will be a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. All right. So now I think we've gotten through everything. I think we're on to the opportunity for us to, for announcements and the cool things that we've seen, we're on to board forum. Yes, Dr. Newmaster?
I want to share out something that's going on this Saturday, and if you've missed it, it's the International Day of Music, and the Minnesota Orchestra and Asian Media are hosting it. It is from noon to midnight downtown Minneapolis around Orchestra Hall. There's four-stage areas, and it's all kinds of just really fun things. Got the calendar here, but it's too small for you to read, but if you go to Minnesota Orchestra dot org, summer slash day of music, you'll get everything from, it's, you know, drums and rap and chungmi, Korean dance and drum onstage in Orchestra Hall, which was what drew my attention, but there's a lot of fun things for every age, even a K-pop group there, and the Minnesota Orchestra will have a free concert on PV Plaza in the evening, too. So well worth looking, if it's good weather, it should be great, but some of them are inside at Orchestra Hall and other locations, Atrium Stage and things like that, so. If you enter international music, it's all kinds of music. Enjoy. This is summer, we can do things like that and maybe not worry about driving in ice and snow.
Thank you. Strike, this is Strike, Oji?
I just wanted to share my experiment, experience at the Market Fest a couple of weeks ago, and how much fun we had with the community, being out in the community, and it was just a blast interacting and engaging, and I was running around talking to people, and it was just a very, I haven't been there for a couple of years, so it was really nice to be out there and see the community, having a great time and engaging with all of us, and nice time. So if you haven't been out volunteering yet or haven't gone, stop by the booth, come on down.
Thank you.
I just have one quick announcement. Nine sixteen career and tech program has a student-built home, open house on July thirteenth from four-thirty to seven, and there were nine students in, from White Bear Lake that had participated in this home, and that's supposed to be fabulous. I toured other homes in past years that the students have built, and it's just phenomenal what they can do. So the open house is the thirteenth, as I mentioned, and if you're interested in the directions or attending, you can email me and I can forward you that information. It's in North St. Paul, so it's not too far, just off of Beam Avenue.
I just printed it off and put it on my refrigerator. I'm a North St. Paul girl in the past, and I've done a couple over there. Nineteenth is easy to find, yeah, but there'll be hundreds of people there, I'm sure, Catherine, so.
Thank you. Anything else, if I? I just want to say that last month, I had an opportunity to spend two days in here doing strategic planning, and I'll be really honest, when I got asked to come down and do it, oh, gosh, two days, I've never felt so energized in my life, and we had the opportunity to work with administration and teachers and members of our community, and to get the input, input from them, it was just awesome. And I came out feeling hopeful and grateful for the members of our community. One more piece to, or one more sign that White Bear Lake community is an awesome place for the White Bear Lake School District, Hugo and Vanus Heights and those areas, people really care about our community, our schools, and our students. So I want, once again, I know, Dr. K, you thanked them, but I want to thank them again because I felt like I should have probably paid you for coming, because that's, I felt it was like a staff development, it was so good. So I want to thank everybody involved. It was a great, it was a great time. I know, it doesn't sound like strategic planning would be, but it was, so thank you. Anything else?
And we'll have more coming at the next meeting, and in August, there'll be an overview, so.
All right, so we're now at the time where we can have an adjournment if somebody would like to make a motion. So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. We do not need discussion on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you very much for all your hard work this month.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.